Welcome, November 28, 2018, 6 o'clock, Memorial Town Hall. We'll begin with announcements. My first announcement this evening is we did not get the Mass grant for the 5 and 10 project, but Secretary Ash says we will be able to reapply for the next round in late spring. So we'll be looking at that, trying to go after it again. Second announcement is, don't forget tomorrow, special town meeting, elementary school, 7 o'clock. This is about trying to save a $200,000 grant if the town chooses to. So hopefully, everybody can attend tomorrow. Brian or Cindy, any announcements?
No, thank you.
Okay. We'll move to approval of minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from November 20.
Second.
Okay, motion made, motion second. Any discussion on favor? Motion carries. Public forum, do we have anybody here for public forum? No, okay, we'll move around. Our next business will be a EverSource pole hearing, open hearing. So, open hearing, reference Wednesday, November 28, 6:00 PM, at Memorial Town Hall, 59 Main Street, Hatfield, to consider a petition from Nstar Electric Company, DBA, EverSource Energy, to install pole 22/18-1 approximately 31 easterly of the center line of Main Street, approximately 7:40 southerly of School Street, to re-feed a house at 48 Main Street. Reference, public comments may, will be taken during this hearing. Discretion may be used whether comments will be received during discussion or following discussion. So examination of both is not required. So we're now going to have the EverSource representative come up here and give a presentation on this. Okay.
You're fine?
Yeah.
Good, right by the microphone. Don't forget to state your name and...
You can have a seat.
Hi, my name is Cardo Catcher from EverSource. I'm a field engineer on this particular job. So presently, 48 Main Street, if you're staring at the home from the road, is fed overhead from the right side of the property. They're looking to go underground, but the utility poles are across the street. We don't allow utility cables to go underneath the road, so it's going to require a pole to be set on the customer property. They're looking to have it set on the left-hand side of the property if you're facing from the road, and that will be, as you stated, about 31 feet from the center of the road.
Okay, you have any questions?
I don't, no.
Do I have any public comments on this? Does anybody want to make any comments on this pole going back or not? If not, then I'm going to close the hearing, and we're going to move with action. I'm going to make a motion to grant the petition to Nstar Electric Company, DBA, EverSource Energy, as specified, to install pole 22/18-1 approximately 31 easterly of the center line of Main Street, approximately 7:40 southerly of School Street, to re-feed house at 48 Main Street.
Second.
I have a motion made, motion seconded. Any discussion?
No.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, so be it. So, there you go.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Topic two would be Inspection Services Department update. So I know we missed you a couple times due to...
I have a full agenda for each of your weeks.
Hi, Kyle.
Hi.
So I'm pretty busy in the building department. Also have a couple new businesses that are interested in coming to town that I've been working with. One with a pretty significant amount of employees, so I'm trying to find them a site. I've been working with them. Couple new solar projects coming up. Your usual, some people interested in doing, you know, subdividing parcels and things like that, and residential building's going well. Commercial, excuse me, is also seem to be picking up a little bit. Got a new recycling facility structure going to be going up, I just heard about in the last few days. And the Helena Chemical new building is coming right along and just about to completion. So everything seems to be going well. Anything from you that you would like to ask me while I'm here? Okay.
I'll ask you in a right of a...
All right. Also, I'm working on tweaking the fee schedule, so I'll be in to see with that shortly.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, before you depart, first off, thank you, just for the residents to understand where we are. The department heads are coming in probably quarterly just to give us updates and fill us in if anything's either needed or to give us the updates on your department. But I wanted to publicly thank you and Phil while we did not get that grant on Route 5.
I know, that was a disappointment.
It was a very big disappointment. I know how much time and energy went in by many people, but you and Phil in particular, you know, Phil working some contact-type people and you with, you know, with the businesses and many others.
We had some really, really good expansion wanting to go in there.
Yeah, so...
But since we can reapply, I would say we keep the pressure up.
All I'm going to do now is look for even more people to locate over there and more businesses, so hopefully, next time we have them, have a stronger application.
Sure. I just wanted to, you know, thank you publicly while you were here for all your efforts.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I'm just wondering, we can find out on that application if there was anything we could change to make it stronger?
I followed up with Mass, I have not heard back from them.
So...
I think if we could get some other larger players in the meantime interested, which I get from time to time, but it's all if it happens at the application time.
It's a timing issue.
Right, most definitely. But thank you too.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kyle.
Okay, topic three. I have an email to appoint Robert Shea as an election worker from Lydia Sish, town clerk.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made, I'll second that motion. Any discussion?
None.
Motion made, motion seconded. Motion carries, okay.
Aye.
Aye.
We're going to take one thing out of order before we get to the town government report because Treeworks is here. I just want to get your stuff moving along, so Treeworks, if you can jump in here. Basically, where we're at was, what we asked last time was to have the paperwork go to our legal. It has. We haven't officially got it back from legal, but I'm being told that we could accept this and once our legal says, "Okay, it's fine," so we can accept this in principle if our lawyer's happy. But before I say that, I want to open it up to my colleagues if they're in agreement with me that we agree to this in principle so they can move their permit along or not.
I'm really not comfortable signing off on anything, we don't see it in its final state because my understanding is it went from the town administrator to the town attorney.
Correct.
And then there was changes from the Treeworks attorney. So we haven't seen those changes yet.
There were proposed edits from town council, so we don't know what those are. And there was some communication late this afternoon from the attorney for Treeworks to town council, and town council, I don't know if town council has received that. I tried reaching him after 5:00 and had to leave a message.
They haven't received.
I think until it's all in black and white, I mean, I think we could probably say in principle. I don't know what good that does or doesn't do Treeworks at this point, but if the attorneys are still, you know, dotting the i's and crossing the t's, I'd feel more comfortable with the final, you know, with the final contract.
I just wanted to tell you guys that the last that I heard was that both attorneys, the town attorney and then the one that's working for us, agreed in principle to the revisions on the contract. What was, it seemed to me was that both sides kind of thought the other one was going to make the actual final draft present tonight, and then next thing you knew, we didn't have that before us.
I understand, yeah.
But it did sound like both sides agreed in the term, so it's just a matter of getting that onto the document and having that final copy then approved by you guys. So I was hoping that we could make a date even as soon as later this week that I could perhaps get someone to sign off on it because we have all of the other pieces for application to the state ready to go in, we're just waiting on that document.
I don't know how my colleagues feel. All I would suggest is, you know, we need to post a meeting 48 hours in advance, so maybe once we get the final, the final, final draft or contract, maybe we could schedule it then.
I expect to communicate with town council tomorrow morning.
Okay, and if these guys are around, I know I'm usually the one because of my work schedule, but I can certainly sneak out for, hopefully, for a one-hour meeting or a half-hour meeting if it ends up being the beginning of next week or something, since tomorrow's Thursday, so nothing would happen this week anyway.
Possibly Monday or Tuesday next week?
If, you know, I mean, if these guys are okay with it.
Okay, all right.
I just also, there's two members from the Heads Up Committee here who would like to also address the host agreement if the boards accept it.
Okay, go ahead.
Did you get a copy of our letter?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
I won't read the whole thing. I'm Sally Winnings. Melody Edwards is with me. We're from the Mental Health Coalition, Mental Health Coalition in town that we've become a member of. The Heads Up Committee is what it's called, and they sent you a letter, and I'm just referring to that in regards to the community impact fee that would be paid by Treeworks. Heads Up strives to ensure that Hatfield becomes a model community committed to educating, liberating, and protecting the mental health of all of its members. With regard to mental health, Hatfield has been disproportionately affected by suicide for a community of this size. We recognize that mental health and substance abuse often go hand in hand, and with the health of our community in mind, we propose that 3% of gross annual sales by the proposed cannabis facility go to funding substance abuse prevention programs over the five years of its term. We propose this fee, or proportion of this fee, I know the town is strapped for money, and that's probably part of the incentive of having this be in our town, but we would also like to have this funding partially, or all of it, for educational programs in elementary school, middle and high schools, and to the adult members of our community at large. And then I just thought I'd skip to the last paragraph that refers to the Cannabis Control Commission's Guide on Host Community Agreements. This is quote, "Municipalities are cautioned against relying on fees that are simply revenue generators in negotiating with marijuana establishments and planning their municipal budgets, as these fees may not withstand judicial scrutiny. Some anticipated costs that may reasonably be included in a fee of up to 3% of gross annual sales could be additionally used towards substance abuse prevention programming during the first years of operation." And then we just have our names on this as members of the Hatfield embraces acceptance and dismantles stigma, which is Heads Up Executive Committee. Ms. Melody Edwards, Ms. Jean Hobbie, Mr. John Robert, Ms. Lee Ann Rubek, Dr. Margaret Russo, Ms. Sean Selby, and myself, Sally Winnings.
I appreciate you coming in front of the board, and that's, I think it'd be probably important for our discussion to determine some of the money towards prevention, and I'm sure, but we don't know yet until we know what our money is.
Just want to have it out there for you.
And that's a good heads up for us, and I appreciate you coming here and giving us a heads up on that. Okay, thank you.
Good.
Thanks, Sally.
Could I make one quick comment on that?
Yes.
Is that okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
Obviously, the town will decide how they want to spend that 3% tax on their own. One thing that is written into the host community agreement that your attorney gave back to us was required 150 hours of community service by employees and owners of our business. So we're, you know, I think the wording on that was that it just needs to have the approval of the select board before we participate in that community outreach, and definitely we're very open to working with, you know, educating responsible adult use and also mental health and all that, so just put that out there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more discussion on that?
No, no, thank you.
Okay. All right, and thank you for coming, appreciate it. We'll move to topic five, no, topic four, which is our town government committee report with Chris Smith, David Kier, and Larry Grossman. Okay, a committee was formed to investigate what the town would have to do and if the town elected to go from a three-member select board to a five-member select board. I guess you're here to give us your report on what you found, correct?
Okay, thanks, Ed. Just to review, we were created at spring annual town meeting through an article brought forth by the select board to create a committee as you described, to explore the structure of the chief elected officials, to review procedural methods, to increase board of selectmen from three to five, and reflect your findings in a report to the board of selectmen due no later than December 2018. So we, when we finally were formed, it was the end of September, we had three members, Dave Kier, Chris Smith, and myself, and we met at that time in elected officers. Dave was the clerk, I'm the chairman, and Chris is a member. And we started our research in looking at the charge we were given, and then explored other towns that had done this or thought about it. And in our report, you'll see a report from Duxbury, who had, it was a little different town, but I thought we discussed that it was important to include that report because while they did expand their board from three to five, that part of it's different than ours, they operate under a charter, we're under a town bylaw, but the...
We don't operate, but go ahead.
Yeah, we have a town bylaw.
But it doesn't speak to...
No, it's silent about the board of selectmen. But I thought that was an interesting report to include because that town was exploring many governance issues, not just the increase in the size, so that's why you see that report here. Then we got to Hadley, which in 2001 went from three members to five members, and they did it, we met with a fellow called John Allen, who was a selectman and a time mover of getting their board from three to five, and they did it at a special town meeting in the winter, and it was unanimous, just simply gavelled in by the moderator. It was a very simple procedure. So having that information, we talked to Marlene, who I'm sure brought it to the board, and that we were introduced to the town council, Tom Muller, or Tom Mullins, and who I had a conversation with and gave him the Hadley bylaw as the Hadley article, and we talked about certain parts of Mass general law, which govern our town if the bylaw is silent about many things. So as a result of that, Tom gave us back the draft article that we'd have to use at town meeting to change from three to five, and it's here on page three. And it's relatively simple, we just vote to go to five members, and then it talks about the procedure of how you get these two extra members and how their terms are staggered the first time, so you're not replacing all five members the next year or something. And you see, it's very, four short sentences, really. And so we discussed this, and then we tried to give you in the report the question and answer format that you might have questions, or residents might have questions either with the selectmen if you decide to go forward on this, or a town meeting, they might have questions. So that's what led to the next couple pages of the questions and answers. And tonight, we expected really just to turn this over to you, and it's been a good process. We learned a lot, and we're probably one of the shortest life committees in the history of Hatfield, and we're going to have one more meeting next Wednesday to approve all the minutes for today and our previous meeting, and then our work is done and you could dissolve us or however you make us go away. And we'd be ready if you want to have any further work, if this were to come before a town meeting, or if you wanted us to meet with you in any discussion, but we feel we've fulfilled our charter, and we wanted to come tonight to, we'll turn over through Marlene a signed copy of it for your records, same as in your packet. There might be a typo or so we'll fix, but, and if you have any questions you want to ask us tonight, but it's totally up to you. We didn't know if you'd have anything you want to discuss tonight, I know you just saw the report the other day.
Yeah, I mean, I did notice like Duxbury's like 16,000 people, Hatfield's like 3,000. Hadley did go to five, but Duxbury also did a survey of their residents according to that report. I don't know if that's something that's beneficial before we bring it up in front of the town or not, so. But as you went through this process, I know you had a meeting earlier, what was the indication that you felt from town, how they felt about it?
Well, we had three people at the public hearing, but at the other meetings, we've had residents, and especially tonight, I think all three were very supportive of it. Two of them were rather vocal about it, and one fellow talked to me after the meeting. I mean, they said like, this is, as I use the word, no-brainer. In our report, we listed 20 other committees, policymaking committees of town of Hatfield, and you know them all, Board of Educ, or School Committee, Planning Board, you know, there's a whole list here, Finance, Capital Planning, Board of Health, Council on Aging, ZBA, Open Space Conservation Housing, there's, you know, 10 more. They all have five. And what seems to be, as we said this in the report, the driving force on the surface, at least in Hadley, was the open meeting bylaw, that times have changed such that it allows subcommittees, it allows task forces, it allows you to meet, that a lot of work has already been accomplished. And that's why the meetings tend to be actually shorter rather than longer, where one comment was, well, with five members, look how long the meetings are now, they're going to get longer. Hadley's evidence is they didn't get longer, they're more efficient meetings. And I think Brian could speak to this from the School Committee, there's just a lot more work done prior to the meeting. So that was, that was a prime issue that they talked about. But what the result was, and I think this was also in a lot of the voters' mind, was we're going to get more representation, the job may not seem so onerous, so time-consuming, we'll get younger people, working people that may not want to do this job if it's just three that meet for hours every week and all this. So it's had a very positive effect that way. And I also felt that there can't be a controlling force on the board. It's hard to get, two people could gang up and kind of mash through their agenda. It's a little harder to corral three or four on a board of five. So they felt that operationally and just widespread representation, that it's working better. There's no idea, nobody ever looked back. It's not like, well, we better go back to three, this is killing us.
The only thing I didn't see in the report that might be a consideration down the road is Marlene's staff supports the existing board, and they also support other committees. So I don't know, Marlene, if you would think that you might need another part-time person to assist with the additional paperwork, the additional amount of work, and because there's also research that they do, and they do a lot of other stuff, so that if the town went to five, I would say that'd be one thing would have to be investigated as far as money-wise, as far as including...
Well, we did talk about the money, it's, your stipend is $2,000 each, so we're talking about $4,000 more on a $12 million budget. That's not even a material amount. In terms of support, I can't speak for Marlene, but selectmen aren't supposed to be grinding Marlene, where she feels like every selectman is a real burden to her. I don't know if that's been the case in the past or not, but it's not like two more selectmen are going to tie her up X number of hours. I don't know if there's a direct correlation to that.
I'm not sure when the, that the School Committee hit with five members, that there's extra staff at the school to take care of the School Committee, the School Committee members. I can't imagine that the members of the Select Board, working just with whoever's here now, couldn't make this a much more streamlined process than it is at this point. Just the simple fact of two of you being able to get together outside of a regular Board of Selectmen's meeting, get some, what we call homework done, and bring it forth to your full board, and say, "Look, this is what we found, this is what we think we should do, and this is the evidence that we have for that." My recollection, any School Committee meeting I've been to, unless there's some real crazy thing on the agenda, you're looking at an hour and a half tops. Now, do they have as much to do as you guys? Maybe not. But now we're looking at, as Larry said, we have a $12 million budget here, we're looking at three as, you know, basically volunteers who are running the town because, you know, you don't get paid what you're worth or what you, the time you put into it. Maybe we should spread that out a little bit more to more people that have more other opinions, other backgrounds, to be able to help keep things moving in a smooth direction.
To David's point, and I think Larry alluded to it also, as a 17-year member of a School Committee, I can tell you that the agendas are five times longer than we do on the Select Board, and the meetings are five times shorter because of having subcommittees and task force that can do a lot of the groundwork.
Yeah.
You know, and it's not to circumvent the process for everybody being, having an opinion or a comment on it, but when it's some of the, you know, down and dirty, find out the information, and you do a task force, and we work the superintendent, just like we would work with Marlene, and then you bring it back, and then the other board members ask you the question, you know, ask us, ask the task force members the questions, because we've already done the research. So it actually moves things along.
Stuff can be included in your packet that you can read ahead of time, that when you go to the meeting, you'd have that information already, and you'd be informed. And the other piece of the puzzle that we talked about too, as far as length of meetings, it's imperative that the chair run the meetings, that they manage the meetings, that things go through the chair and the chair, you know, make sure that everybody gets their chance, but, you know, not two or three and four times. We need to, that's another piece of the puzzle, I think, that chairpersons of all committees need to be able to manage meetings.
Yeah.
The red light.
No, thank you for doing this work, first of all. I did, when you talked about, well, you could do subcommittees, I think that's kind of what the chairman did this time. There was a committee here that reported on this particular issue, and there's been some back and forth about whether there was supposed to be an opinion or not opinion, so I don't want to weight an opinion either way. But a couple of things I was just going to ask, I saw, when I read through it, that you did talk to only one person in Hadley though, right? There was just one?
I talked to a current selectman also, but she didn't come to our meeting.
Okay, and...
In fact, she pretty much insisted that we talk to this fellow, John Allen.
Sure. Okay. One thing I was surprised when, because the Duxbury, all the information there wasn't just on this, but it was very interesting to read through everything, but I was surprised in the Duxbury report that they reported after, first of all, were you planning on doing like a survey like they did among townspeople?
We discussed it, but we decided that that's not really part of what we should do, that if the board wanted that information, that they could do that. But really, you're going to find out if this were to go on the town meeting warrant... warrant.
Yeah.
Whether people want it or not, because we don't have to do, like they did in Duxbury, where you have to have a vote first and then go to the legislature, because they have a charter, we don't. All it takes is this article being put on the warrant, and if the townspeople say yep, it goes through, if they say no, it's a dead issue.
Because one thing I did take from that was that in there, under the column on page three, it says recommendations. After they're studying everything, Duxbury says, "A three-member board works well in smaller towns with populations under 10,000."
That's, I think, I think that's a.
I thought that was their.
That's a Division of Local Services opinion of the people who did this report. And that's why we included the, the list of towns that have three or five here in the West. And yes, the majority of small towns have three. But I think open meeting law and, you know, the amount of work that, that continues to increase for the Board of Selectmen has an effect on some people, you know.
Because it seems to me that in the area, several of them are going back, like Amherst is going just to the council now, if you saw that.
They totally change their whole government.
And I talked to a counselor in Greenfield this weekend, and he told me they were proposing to go from five back to three on their council.
Greenfield Council is in the teens.
City Council.
He said they were reducing to five and now they have a talk to three.
They have a mayor and.
They have a mayor now and they have a council.
I want to say there's 13, 13 council members in Greenfield.
I talked to Mr. White and he's talking about going back, so. But, yeah, so thank, thank you for doing that. I don't know, no, do you remember, my, my memory, I believe this was voted down once or twice before though, right? When it was, yeah, when it was proposed before.
Was this brought.
It's been a lot, yeah, you do remember though, right?
Was this on the warrant before the town meeting and voted down?
Yeah.
But I think, I would just.
You just don't know. You just don't know.
I think this report, but mostly, what I personally think is the main takeaway is the Q and A, which is page four and five of this. And what we were hoping to get at five o'clock was maybe more, you know, but I think educating the pros and cons, you know, and to flush them out. I, I think essentially, you know, that is really what is going to, you know, I, I think this is a good idea to study this first before you just throw it at people, which is what happened, I don't know, eight years ago or whatever it was, because you didn't have any preliminary back and forth, you didn't have any study. And with this, I think people can make up their minds and see it.
And what was the reason you didn't want to do a survey like Duxbury?
Well, the survey, we don't have a budget.
I don't think, I don't think that was part of the chart of what the expectation was.
What the task was?
Yeah.
I think it costs money. I'm not sure what the value is, if you see it at town meeting, if people want to discuss it, or you could have hearings as the Board of Selectmen to discuss the article.
It could have been a non-binding question on.
It's not, you know, the funny thing is, we, we thought it was kind of a larger deal than we discovered in, for example, Hadley, where it was just, it was nothing. It was gavelled in by the moderator as unanimous. There was no discussion, because the people were kind of, they, they were probably a little more angry than Hatfield. They, they had problems with some of their selectmen. There was a selectman that was probably going to be recalled. So there were issues that I hope no town has to get to that point to try to make a change.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to thank the three of you as well.
Thanks. It was fun. We did a lot.
If it's not obvious, I'm a proponent of this, which is why it was brought up at last year's town meeting, which overwhelmingly said, yes, find out what's involved in going to a five-member board. The question and answers, I think, are, are very good. You guys did a really nice job with the report, so, so thank you. But I think it's very clear, I think it's very concise, and for all the reasons you said, as far as having task force or subcommittees or whatever we want to call them, to have members of the board meet with one another without violating the open meeting law, I think is very huge. I mean, you know, you list all the committees that Hatfield already has, there's 20 of them here that have five members. And there's a reason for that, right?
Or more.
Or more. So I just wanted to, to go on the record and thank you. And I think town meeting will, I don't know that we need a survey, I think town meeting will be the survey. Town meeting will either vote it up or down.
Well, the vote on this article.
And then we'll know.
The vote on the article last spring was kind of an endorsement.
That, I thought so. But, but I, but that was just to investigate. Now, now, if we bring the article forward, it's going to be the same thing with an, with an up or down. Is that just a majority, a simple majority? Is that all it takes?
Simple majority.
And I, I think this could, this could happen as early as this spring, if there is in fact another special town meeting at some point.
Well, I have heard, I've heard a lot of people.
This could go on that, and then it could go to the town meeting in, in May, or.
And kick in the following year.
Or, well, at the special time, then we could do the election in May.
If you have a special time, yes.
If not, then you go to the regular spring town meeting, have the vote there, and then you'd have to wait a year for the 2020.
Correct, yeah, that's, that's what I meant.
That's what their pleasure was.
Right.
I know there's been a lot of people so far, to me expressed, if this goes up in front of the, the town, it should go at the annual meeting when everybody's there. That's, that was one point.
Again, that's up to the Board of Selectmen to decide what warrant you guys, you know, put that on, but.
No, I'm just saying what I've heard so far.
Yeah, because if it, if it went on this spring's town meeting, that's too late for, from an election perspective. So if it goes on this spring, it'll just be the following year. 2020 would be the first time that the three, two, and one were, were put on the ballot.
And I mean, we, we accept this report, we can, I don't know if it's on the website yet, or it's going to go on the website, then people can look at it and they can make their opinion. And they, after tonight's meeting, they can start discussing it, the pros and the cons. And I'm sure some people already expressed their feelings towards it.
It'd be wonderful to hear the views. And I think this is a big step towards that. And if it comes to be in a spring meeting, then we, you know, back in the spring, we'll have more discussions.
Yep, great. I'll make a motion to accept the committee presented to the Board of Selectmen from the Town Government Committee on November 28th, 2018. And once again, thank you, gentlemen, for your, for your efforts in this.
Motion made.
Second.
Motion seconded. I also would like to thank the committee for all their work in this, and it is appreciated. Motion made, motion seconded. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We've accepted your report, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For the record, John, we are ending our meeting tonight. We will resume, our next meeting will be posted at December 5th at four o'clock, or five o'clock at Town Hall. Thank you.
And then, and then we'll dissolve the committee after that, is that?
Yeah, we're done.
Once you're finished in December?
It's up to you.
Well.
We got to get, we have to gallop.
Okay, no, the way, the way the whole thing started, okay, we'll just leave it as is. That's fine.
At some point, I would assume, now that you've received the report, the Board of Selectmen will have to make a decision as to whether or not you would want to put this before the town and when. And I was just wondering if you would want to continue, rather than dissolve this committee, that you would want to continue this committee to, as, as, as a committee that could advise and consult of the Board of Selectmen as you're going through this process of having to make that decision. And once made, if you happen to be favorably disposed and want to ask the community to vote on this issue, for them to assist you in, in providing materials that, and/or meetings, hearings, whatever, public hearings on, on, on the issue as it, as it, as we make our, our, our progress towards, towards that meeting, whether it be a special or the annual town meeting. Just wondering about that.
Well, for, for me, the only reason I mentioned it was because I thought in the very beginning, you guys were ready to run away after presenting the report about dissolving the committee. So, I mean, I have no problem keeping it intact personally. I also can't imagine we wouldn't bring this before the townspeople at a, at a town meeting, given, given last year's town meeting to investigate, having the investigation done, and now having a proposal. So, I mean, I can't imagine it's not going to be on a, a future town meeting warrant.
Well, keep us, that's fine. That's fine. We just didn't want you to, we're telling you our timeline.
Is that a vote of the board tonight to do that, or Brian, that's just your?
To do what?
To, to present this article as proposed?
Well, I think we still have to discuss all our articles that are coming up. I don't know that tonight's the night to discuss pick and choose articles, to be honest. But, I mean, you know, I, I would support it, that's all I can say. Whenever, whenever we have the topic about articles, you know, usually we do it after the first of the year when we start doing all the articles together, so. But I, I would just find that it's a shame that you have a committee put together, they spend all the time to get information, and then we don't bring it forward. I mean, that's, that's just my personal opinion.
But if we had a town meeting, I'm sure they would come forward to explain their report.
Well, keep us as a committee then. We will speak on behalf of the committee too, as well as maybe personal views, but that's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, topic five, moving right along. Water sewer abatement, there's three requests in your packets. We'll take one at a time. I'll take the first one, which would be listed as David Biddle, looking for an abatement. And the item was water sewer was turned off at the property, so no bill should have been issued.
I was just going to mention on that, I think the paperwork, there's an error, it says the address of service, it has a Connecticut address, which I believe is the home address, so I don't know if that needs to be corrected before we vote on it. It is.
I'm sorry, Ms. Kyle. Wait, wait. I'm sorry. 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 I'm sorry.
of 11 communities to receive above the 65%, so.
Sadly, it used to be 100%.
Yeah, yeah.
That's good news. Under old business, you have an update too, Marlene, on topic eight?
Yes. The town had received a request for land under Chapter 61A on North Hatfield Road. In your packet, you have a letter from the property owner, Richard Slawowski, and he does support the town exercising its right to investigate either purchasing or transferring that land to a conservation organization. I know that Bob Wagner has asked to meet with the Board of Selectmen in December to discuss it, if the board supports this, and it was on the last previous meeting agenda, and it was deferred to this meeting. So if the board does support this, I'd ask that the board go on record as exercising its option to investigate and look into keeping the land in Chapter 61.
In the way I understand it, we can investigate, and if we can come up with terms with the owners somehow, then it's fine. If not, then, because once farmland's gone, it's gone, so, you know, if there's some way we can save what we have, I don't think that's a bad thing, and I don't think it's wrong to try to at least investigate. I have, I've been told there's some stuff working in the background to try to come to terms, so we'll see if they have the 120 days, and hopefully, as far as I'm concerned, that's just me, that I hope maybe we can work something out.
And I have communicated with the Realtor, Mike Mendick, he's aware of the...
Yes, and we made him aware of it, because under Chapter 61A, we do have first choice of trying to purchase it.
Town has 120 days, and I don't expect we'll take the full 120 days.
So Bob is looking for the board to just, in principle, to accept this?
Yes, the board would need to...
Okay. I'll make a motion to accept this in principle, that we investigate and give, and exercise our rights to at least look at trying to come to terms with this. I don't know if it's another way to word it or not, or...
Well, so we're not looking, Bob's coming before us with a proposal of some sort? We're not looking to refuse this?
He's in communication with Kestrel Land Trust, and he'll have more information in December.
So he's just looking for us to support that he's going forward with Kestrel Land Trust and trying to come up with some kind of terms?
I think that's fine.
Yes, under the statute, the board needs to take a vote to, either way, either you're not going to exercise it in the...
But we don't know if we're doing that yet. How can we take a vote if we don't know what we're doing?
The board is investigating.
But we don't have to respond at all, we have 120 days, right?
You do, yes.
You know what I mean? I mean, if it's just a principle thing that to tell Bob, I mean, I'm fine with that, but other than that, we're sort of in the middle right now, because we don't know if we're going to refuse it, or we don't know if we're going to actually look to purchase it. So our vote, you know what I mean? So we, since we don't know, I don't know how we can make a vote on it, one way or the other.
And we can sort of say, Bob, investigate it, come back to us, you know?
By doing nothing, I think that's saying it's still kind of in our hands, because we have 120 days.
Because we're still within the 120-day framework.
If the board's more comfortable after, you know, discussing this in a meeting in December, and then move forward, or not.
Sounds good. Okay. So we don't need to vote anything, we just, Bob, just do your thing, and we'll wait for your report.
Well, I think just acknowledgement by the board that we will pursue investigating anyway, because that's what we are doing.
So Bob...
I wouldn't want to do that if there isn't any record by the board to...
So Bob wants us to approve that he's going to...
No, Bob doesn't want you to do anything.
He wants this.
You want it to, you want to get it.
Right, right. I mean, there should be a record that the town is looking into it.
So you want to...
And in December, you could vote to exercise your option to enter into an agreement with Kestrel.
Based on Bob's report at that time.
Right, right.
Okay. So I don't, I mean, we'll wait for Bob to come back with his report and say, pursue it, right? I mean...
That's fine if that's...
Okay. And we don't really need to vote on that, I don't think, because that's...
I mean, if Marlene's just looking to say, yeah, we'd still like to find out more information about town use for the land, then I'll make that motion.
Okay, we'll make the motion to find out more information about this. I'll second that motion.
Right?
Just really to support moving forward, looking into it.
All in favor?
Aye.
So be it. Okay, motion carries.
We know what the intent is, thanks.
And you have some information on the municipal aggregation report?
Yes, I had a conference call with Colonial Power last week regarding bid pricing. Once again, there wasn't any, there wasn't really an incentive or benefit. Colonial Power will continue to monitor the activity, and perhaps in January, but again, it's all dependent on the weather, you know? The rates are driven by the weather. So if, you know, we have something to consider in January, I'll certainly report back to the board then.
Okay, so nothing at this time with Colonial Power, and they're going to get back to us, because we did sign an agreement prior, earlier this year, I believe, right?
A municipal aggregation agreement? It wasn't, I think it was last year.
Yeah.
It was last year.
Yeah, and then we get the, like you said, the term lengths or the, you know, the changes in, if there's changes in pricing, so.
I know, we did receive a grant for the elementary school on electric...
And the high school, both schools.
All right. Okay, so do we have any unanticipated new business?
I don't have anything.
No, I would just remind, I would just, your opening comment, just remind people that town meeting is, I don't know when they'll see this, but it's tomorrow for our purposes.
I think that's it, Brian.
Thursday, the 29th, at seven o'clock at the elementary school, to talk about the wastewater treatment plant and the potential grant, if the vote goes the way we hope of receiving almost half that money back from the state, which is $200,000, so.
So we can get 42% back, save $200,000, or kick the can down the road, end up paying over half a million at a later date, so.
Like Ed said.
That's what basically it comes down to, right?
I think so.
But the people get to decide, and hopefully we get a quorum there.
Yep, hope so.
I know I saw it on the website, you had it up front, but a couple of days ago when I checked, it wasn't on the calendar itself, if somebody just checked the calendar, so it wasn't listed on the calendar itself on the 29th.
The town clerk had said she was putting it on the calendar, because somebody had asked.
It wasn't there the day before yesterday, it was just on the front.
She'll be here tomorrow, I'll ask her.
And for members in Finance Committee, it's six o'clock tomorrow.
Yes.
That's right, that's what's posted for us to meet, and then, meeting at seven.
Correct.
Town meeting, yep. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, motion made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So be it, motion carries.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, have a good evening.